Train or curb, you know, that maybe it can't be handled. So just, I think something from both sides, but addressing naturally from, from, from worst to best. It's, it's, you can't kind of pick and choose and go where, you know, one, one neighborhood over another. You just find out where the problem is, where the most work is needed, and I think you just start there.
Great, thank you. Same question to Dave Dillon.
Sorry about that. I struggled a little bit with this question just because, going back to when Steve Berkland ran Public Works, Tenal Gair and his crew, I think they do a really nice job. With all this stuff, our, our streets are in pretty good shape, our curb and gutter. I, I drove around the other day and I really didn't see a lot of issues. I think they do a nice job. I think, you know, if you look at 10th Street will be new, A Street's new, First Street and now Second, those are a lot of new roads that, you know, are, are brand new. So I think it's, it's something that certainly can be addressed. It, it is a, it's set up and planned, so it's done, you know, like five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 year span. So some do get beat up before they get redone, but you can't do them all because the cost would be, and we're battling the tax issue again. So I, I think it's, it's set up in a way to try and do it as affordable as possible, but you, you know, it'd be great to do them all over, but you can't. So I think they do the best they can. And I think our Public Works guys really do nice work.
All right, thank you. Lindsay, same question to you.
I was actually surprised at this question as I am constantly rollerblading on these streets. So I know the condition that most of them are in. And I thought, most of them are in pretty decent condition. I'm not saying that there aren't some streets that do need some repair. But I believe that they're being identified and they're addressing those issues. I think we'd need to analyze which ones would need priority, see what would be feasible financially and then budget accordingly, which I think that the city does currently. I do agree with Dave as well. Gary and his crew do do a nice job. But yeah, I think, I think they're in pretty good, good condition compared to other smaller cities that I've visited. I think they're, they're pretty good. Like I said, there are a few that do need to be addressed, but yeah.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to question three for everyone, the order will be two. So Dave, one, Lindsay, and three Trent. The question is, what do you see being Malacca's number one problem in 2020? How do you propose the problem is fixed slash solved?
Well, again, that's another question I'd like to just kind of flip. I, I don't really think dwelling on our problems is going to solve a whole lot of things. I think we need to look at what are positives? What are things we can build on and, and how can those positives over, overshadow some negatives that are out there? If you had to answer it, I would, you know, obviously economic growth in our downtown development. It's always an issue in a small town. You're always trying to maintain that downtown vibrancy. So that's always an issue. But if you look at the things we have around it with our parks and our activities and things, you build up enough things going on and you make it a positive place to be, those businesses can grow and can expand your downtown, can be strong. So I, I guess I'd like to look at it a positive way. And what are those good things we have and how can we build and make them even better? So that it, it will overshadow any negatives or overturn those negatives.
Great, thank you so much. Number one, Lindsay, question to you.
Well, COVID, I think it's going to take a while from, for us to recover from everything that COVID has caused. It's not going to be an easy fix. It's going to take time. You know, I, I can't say what the solution is going to be as it seems every day. It, it changes. We're going to have to work together to get through it. We're going to work, have to work closely to maintain our current businesses, just to keep them going, keep our community afloat. Who knows what tomorrow will bring? I think that COVID is going to be around for a while and it's going to continue through the 2020s.
Awesome, thank you so much. And third, Trent, your response to question number three.
Sure. So kind of riding off of Lindsay here, you know, COVID, of course, we don't need to talk about COVID. We know what it's been, we know what it is. It's unfortunate that it is, though, seems to be so ever-changing. But I think the biggest conversation I have with people, and one of the things I'd like to do here is, when people say, I just wish things would get back to normal. And, and the truth of the matter is, it's not going to be normal like it was probably ever again. So you work to create and be the exhibitor in creating a new normal and not being disrespectful to people, meeting them, of course, right where they are. But that could be a struggle. And again, with businesses, same thing. Some people have taken a hit here that it might not be recoupable, you know, but they may want to stay here. And we need to work together and make them know that we do want to help them come back to life with Malacca and to flourish in the best way that we can. But for me, the way I've just kind of taken on this whole COVID thing is, you know, I don't want to go back to being stuck in the same normal as I knew it. I look forward to creating and, and leading people in a new normal and being an exhibitor, exhibitor of that. And just making them feel comfortable and embracing that. And I think Malacca can definitely do that, being the sized town that we are, so.
Okay, great. Moving on to our fourth question. I would say at this time, our questions tonight have all come from our community. We had a link that was out in, that was emailed to our businesses on social media. We had 20 questions submitted from that. This one was a blind pick from those. So to wrap up our last question of the evening, the order will go Lindsay, Dave and Trent. And the question is as follows. What do you view as the role of the public library in the Malacca community? And how do you plan to support the local library as a council member?
Well, it's huge in the community, in any community. People who don't have, say, access to computers, books can utilize the public library. I guess I plan to support it as much as I can, promoting it. I know we need to keep it open. It said, when I hear in any library is closed or shut down, it's a, it's a place for people to go. Just information. I guess. I know, I, the library is just an important part of a community. I remember for myself, growing up, my kids, we would, we go to the library, we'd always go to the library. I know, I think it's, it's just a huge part of the community. I plan to support it as much as I can. I guess I.
Alright, thank you. And it goes, the question goes to Dave.
Yeah, I agree with Lindsay. The, the library is a key part of the town. As a council member, I've always tried to support them as much as possible. I think it was a key thing when they built the new library in Tonah, that gets a, not only a nice facility, but it's an important facility. Libraries are going to evolve. They've, they've had to evolve as books have become not as common as some other methods, but they've, they are evolving. They're a good spot for computer access, good spot for meetings, good spot for just relaxing. So it's, it's an important part of our community and I think, you know, we'll continue to support it as the city. I know as a council member, I would. And, you know, they do a lot of great things there. I know that their organization, Friends Library is a a perfect example of a community organization getting work done at a, at a groundwork level.
Great, thank you so much. And to Trent, our fourth question of the evening.
Sure. So I would definitely, I, I'm definitely in supportive library. I, like Lindsay, spent a lot of time in the library back in Louisiana, in that small town that I grew up in. I, I view a library as just a, a center of knowledge of, for, for all of us, not just the youth, but for all of us. It's like, it's like a heartbeat of just a plethora of knowledge you can go to read and learn, relax, have some quiet time. I think a, a library in a, in a city is, especially this size, is, is a great thing or anywhere. Because there's so many kids too, also like, and there's kids and adults all, all the same. It's a great place to have, to be able to maybe use things that you don't have access to. You know, because of maybe some unfortunate circumstances. But I just, I've always viewed a library as like a place of a center of knowledge for people to grow and learn in a city. So I, I get kind of sad when I see. Kind of like, let's see, I, it's sad to me when I see those places have a tendency to close up or disappear. But I, I'm, I'm all in it to, to just make it as vibrant and to help it be as successful as possible.
Great, thank you so much. Alright, finally, in closing tonight, we have the order of Trent, Dave and Lindsay. This will be a one-minute closing statement. After this, we'll take, just quick, if you need to stretch your legs, five minutes, regroup, and then we'll go into the mayoral candidates. So first off, Trent, in your closing statement.
Sure. So again, I just want to thank everybody, Andrea Jordan, for this opportunity of being here. I want to thank the other candidates for just doing what you do. You've done a great job. But I guess I would just say to Malacca that, you know, I'm here for you. I support you. I want to help you. I want to do whatever I can as a citizen of Malacca first, you know? And Malacca is a great place and, and, you know, maybe just that fresh face and getting on board and working with others really, really excites me. So there you have it. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this and be a part of this this evening.
Alright, thank you, Trent. Dave, closing statement.
Yeah, I would like to thank you guys too. I think it's really nice what you're doing here. I also would appreciate you, you know, your support to continue as a member of the Malacca City Council. The one thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, I think it's important with, it's great to see we have people running for council, we have people running for mayor, we have people running for school board. You know, there's only so many people that will be elected and I hope we can take all these great ideas and energy, not only from the people here tonight, but the people that are watching and move forward with that. You know, these ideas don't die after the election. We need to be involved. We need to get more people on committees. People come to a council meeting and, and, you know, throw out those ideas and let's have a discussion. And if we need as many people as we can in our community to be involved and to give their inputs, that we continue to grow and we continue to be a, a great community. Because it takes all of us. And I think, you know, don't be afraid to jump in the water and, and give it a shot. Thanks again.
Thank you, Dave. And Lindsay, your closing statement.
I'd like to thank everyone for their time as well. I, I truly believe that it, it does take the community to get things done. Any community input is great to hear. I, I hope to bring, or to continue to be able to bring something different to the table, to the council. I mean, I live here, my family lives here, my friends live here. I care a lot about Malacca and all the decisions that are made affects everybody, you know, myself included. So it's, it takes a lot of thought, a lot of time, a lot of effort. So yeah, I appreciate this tonight. It was nice to be able to get some thoughts out. Yeah, so thank you.
Alright, so if you want to stand, stretch your legs, we'll get like five minutes, 7:09. So let's say 7:14, we'll jump back on. Council members, you're welcome to stay or go, whatever you feel. Don't feel as though you have to pop out. You're more than welcome to stay and we'll continue in just a short minute. Alright, everybody. If we get Greg back on, we will start. Alright, there he is. So welcome again. Thank you all for being here. For people that are joining us late, this is the second part of the candidate forum with those running for mayor. Before we started tonight, we drew cards and the order of answering the questions is going to be, for the opening order statement is one Buzz, two Greg, and three Pete. And we have Jordan that will continue to be our time moderator. So you have one minute for your opening statement and we'll begin with Buzz.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say thank you for putting this event on to the chamber and Andrea for all your help. First of all, I feel a little bit like the underdog here. It's my first forum. It's the first time I run for office. And I know Pete does, has a wealth of history in these event, these types of events as well as Pete or as well as Greg. I know that he's run for office before as well. So just want to say thank you. My name is Carvin Bazell. I'm running for mayor and I'm looking forward to working towards, I, I wanted to help out, so I threw my name in the ring and I just wanted to help out. And I believe that my business background, I can help the city and that's why I decided to run.
Alright, thank you Buzz. Number two, Greg, your opening statement. You have a minute for that.
Good evening. My name is Greg Waller. I'm running for the mayor of Malacca position. I believe my background and well-established commitment to this city qualifies me as the best candidate for the position. Forty-one years ago, my wife and I moved to the city of Malacca. We raised three children here who attended the Malacca school system. We presently have two grandchildren who are in the Malacca Elementary School. I am presently a board member of the St. Mary's Pastorial Council. I'm a retired law enforcement officer, 30 years. I'm a retired Malacca volunteer fireman for 20 years. I'm a retired Malacca Parks and Trails Department employee of 14 years. And I'm a pass board member of the Malacca area food pantry. I really appreciate all your support.
Alright, thank you Greg. And Mayor Pete, one-minute opening statement.
First of all, I would thank you Andrea and the chamber. I was born and raised out in South Dakota. I'm from a family of seven boys and yes, my mom was a saint. Six things I believe in that makes a person are faith, family, friends, community, your profession and your acquaintances. And of those, we have to give back to all six of those as much as they have given to us. Malacca has given great deal to me and my family. I have three kids and five grandchildren. I moved here in 1975 and have been a resident of the city ever since. I was the anesthesia provider at the Malacca Hospital and also at the Princeton Hospital. And in 2000, from 1975 on, and in 2001, we as anesthesia people created a, our own business.
Alright, moving on to question number one. We, the order of question number one will be Greg, Mayor Pete and Buzz. The question is, if elected, how will you work with current technology and social media platform, platforms to communicate and inform our city? Do you feel any improvement should be made? If so, what?
I feel the city has a good start on the technology and what's going on. But as we all know, technology is changing, it seems like daily. We need somebody that is able to keep on top of this, research it, bring what we can back to the city to better it. A prime example of this is this meeting tonight. I've never done anything like this and without the help of the, of you Andrea and a neighbor of mine, I'd be lost. And nobody would see my face or hear my voice. The thing is, is nobody knows everything. We need to be able to ask people, do the research and find out what's going to be best for our community. Each town is different. Bock is different than Malacca, Forston is different than Malacca. And so we, we want to keep up on it. If we don't keep our webpage and our Facebook accounts fresh, people become bored with it. They won't come back, they won't look at it. I know this from past experience of things that I have researched for my own use. And if nobody's changing it, you just forget about it. There has to be websites out there that will benefit small towns that we could go to. I know some of the stuff that I put in the newspaper article for the candidates, I researched it on the internet. So there's places out there to do it. We just need people that are willing to go out and do it and I am willing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And to Mayor Pete, same question.
I think right now we are fairly well off. I think we can do better. And this is why we've hired a person to do it. We're already on Facebook, we're on the web, we're on YouTube. YouTube, the council meetings are also been online and will be continued to be online even after the COVID is over. We have a quarterly newsletter that is online. All the agenda requests can be online and notifications are online. The homepage also has a list of all the council members. And I encourage anybody to call me at any time and go from there. The one thing we do have to be careful about by using social media, we do have to be careful about the open meeting laws and not having more than two council members doing city business on social media at the same time. That we have to be careful about. But other than that, I think with the new position that we're going to be talking later on, we have a good handle on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pete. And the same question to you Buzz.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good question. I'm a little surprised on, on this type of question with this type of forum. I mean, you're talking social media issues with this city. I mean, is this really an issue right now with the city that we need to address? I think there's other issues that are more important. We have some, some things that we need to address. We're losing businesses. We have challenges ahead of us related to COVID. Just this last week, found out about the Fairview Pharmacy and the clinic closing. And here we're discussing social media on a forum and trying to get this out to our constituents. I think it's a, you know, it, to me, it's a, it's one of those, you know, it's not as big of an issue as some of the other issues that we need to deal with. I think the city has done a great job putting things on the web. I think they've done a good job using Facebook and some social media. It's been good to be able to, during the COVID and the shutdown, to be able to join the meetings through the Zoom calls. So I think those are all good things. I think we need to continue to try to look for improvements in ways that we can utilize this. But it's not generating, generating revenue directly. It's an expense. And we, you know, so I think we need to take all things into consideration and as we move forward. But I, I think it's always good to look for improvements.
Great, thank you so much. Moving on to question number two. The order will be three, Mayor Pete, two Greg, and one Buzz. The question is, what do you see being Malacca's number one problem in 2020? How do you propose the problem is fixed slash solved? How do you propose the problem is fixed slash solved?
Andrea, just a minute on that one. I thought number two question was the county tax rate.
Those were questions that could be proposed. There was no specific order of those being listed. Those were all questions that could be proposed.
Our number one problem, I think, is taxes. And from that point, I am very concerned about the taxes that are going on here in Malacca. And the other problem I would say would be the take and get into the COVID and go from there. But taxes and the development of the twenty-three and one sixty-nine junction, I think are of great importance. And then to return to normal. But there's solutions different for everybody to return to normal. And the COVID situation has disrupted everyone. The, the pandemic brings with it fears of the unknown and uncertain. And I've been in the health profession for over forty years and I think COVID should be handled by the health professionals and not be part of a political issue. And anyone elected to a public office has to take into account the health and safety of all the constituents. While many things are different, some things remain the same. We still have to need our faith, trust and compassion for each other to make it through these tough times. But as far as the number one problem, I would say is the taxes of Malacca County and not the city.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pete. Same question goes to, to Greg Waller.
Okay. What I see is the biggest problem for the city in the 2020s is expansion. As you travel around the industrial park, it looks like we have a lot of property there. We don't. We have two lots. You go out to the junction, the, the city also owns a lot out there that is landlocked. The city maintains it every year and has since at least two thousand and six. It's a drain. As you drive around the downtown area, we have five buildings that are closed. And there's two open lots that could be built on. These are privately owned, so I think the city should help the owners of these places, find tenants, other businesses. They come into town, they're going to start paying taxes. As far as residential lots, there's a few. Again, they're, they're all privately owned and none of them are owned by the city, of course. And we're limited to how we can expand as a city. Are we ever going to get as big as St. Cloud? Not in any of our lifetimes. But we need to have a place to put businesses. I know the Hedges was brought up. That land was sold five years ago. Nothing has been done to it. I understand times are tough, money's tough, but we don't have anything. And as far as expansion goes, we're limited to the west because we have the Rum River. It's cost prohibitive. We're limited to the north because of the golf cart, golf course. So therefore.
Thank you Greg. Moving on to our third question, we will ask, we'll have you answer the questions in the order of two, one and three. So two is Greg, one is Carvin and three is Mayor Pete.
Needs to answer a second question.
Oh whoops, did I get ahead? I apologize.
Go ahead Buzz.
Go ahead Buzz.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I just, I want to say I agree with both Pete and Greg that taxes are a concern, twenty twenty and moving forward, also expansion. And that's why I decided to run for mayor. I mean, my background is in business and business development. And as I've gathered facts and met with the county administrators and met with the city and gone through an analysis, analysis, I, I agree with both Pete and Greg. Taxes are a concern. When we have declining industry, the tax base has to cover that loss. And so that taxes increases, industry decreases. And we've been in a declining industry state for several years. And that's no one's, specifically no one's fault, but it does need to be addressed and it's a big concern moving forward. And when you grow industry, you also have to couple that with affordable housing. And I believe that with my background, I'm the best candidate to be able to come up with some of these solutions. I think that there can be some re zoning of some of the industrial, current industrial area. Nobody wants an industrial building in the, in the middle of town. So there's some considerations there. Also, the building, industrial area that we have, the two lots. It's very unlikely a business is going to relocate to those lots because there's no scalability. I understand business. I'm an entrepreneur. I've been lucky to start Timber Valley Grill and was originally the highway cafe and the sportsman's. So, you know, I, I want to put my business background and understanding to use, but I do agree with both Pete and Greg.
Thank you Buzz and my apologies again. Question number three, the order is two, one and three. So Greg, Buzz and Pete. The question is, with the hiring of the new events and tourism community development press, position by the city, how do you envision the position working with the Chamber of Commerce to attracting people to the, to Malacca for all four seasons of the year?
Okay, I feel they should be one department. It doesn't make sense to me to have two people basically doing the same job, promoting the city, trying to expand opportunities and things like that. When you have two people working separately, you have communication problems. It, it's difficult to always keep in touch. I feel that the person should be open to working with the volunteer groups to promote what we have and to expand upon it. I know for a fact that nothing is ever said about the over one hundred geocaching sites located on city property. It's a free deal that people can go out and walk around, get exercise and, and enjoy our parks and trails. There is talk of bicycle races and cross-country races on our trails. We already have groups that donate their time on these and have the expertise in it. So let's utilize them to promote the city and that's what this person would do, would help bring all the chicks to one basket, so to speak. We have other volunteer groups, excuse me, in the city, like the Malacca Arts Council, Friends of the Library, the museum. And there's, there's others I'm sure that I've forgotten. All these people have ideas and I think if they go to one person, it would be easier for them. It would be easier on the person trying to help set these things up. And by doing this and showing her openness, hopefully other people will come forward with their other pet projects.
Thank you Greg. Same question to Buzz.
Can you repeat the question? I want to see the specifics.
Yep. With the hiring of the new events, tourism and community development position by the city, how do you envision the position working with the Malacca Chamber in attracting people to Malacca all four seasons of the year?
Well, you know, I, I'm glad that the city is looking into trying to promote some tourism and some other activities. We've spent a lot of money on the parks and the trails. And those are all, you know, admirable things. You know, I think that there's some rudimentary issues moving forward. Some of the stuff that we discussed that Greg brought up in the previous question with expansion. You know, we have a beautiful park down there. We've invested a lot of money into that park. And I know that there's a goal of trying to maybe turn that into a regional park and combine the trails. But we have some marketing issues. You know, no one's going to want to go to a rec park. It's not like going to a Candy Ojai Park. I mean, there's some marketing and branding issues that we have right from the start. We're also actually earlier, one of the council members had mentioned that we are a farming town. You know, yeah, there, we definitely have some history in the agriculture, but originally we're a river town. And I think that it's important to try to focus on some of our history and the fact that we're a river town. And if you go south of Malacca and see how the towns and the cities along the Rum River have basically screwed it up. You look at Princeton and St. Francis along the Rum River and how poor planning of the expansion that Greg brought up earlier, they've really missed an opportunity. And I think that by having this person, I think it'd be good to also look and review our comprehensive plan and what the direction, long-term direction is of. And trying to brand, you know, kind of rebrand and tie in our parks and take advantage of the fact that we are a river town. That's going to bring in more tourism and people off the highway and also allow us to continue having a small, small town culture.
Thank you Buzz. Same question to Mayor Pete.
First, first of all, we're in the process of a city council and administration of developing that job description. We have not totally developed that job description yet. We did move one of our part-time people to full-time to help duties and we're also reassigning different duties to their different present staffs. But we did put it in the budget. And that position will also include the development of the social media and the activities calendar. And not only working with the chamber, like the other two candidates have to, have said, we have to work with the tourism board, the schools, the churches, the organizations, the businesses and the volunteers and any concerned citizen. By doing this, we're going to attract people and visitors, but we also have to create activities for our present people. I don't know how many times I hear, well, as a high school graduate, why should I stay in Malacca? What have they got to offer me? And I hear that often. So I think it's everybody getting involved and promoting Malacca is the thing. And I've been one of the bigger promoters outside of Artie Becklin, of anybody around, over the years I have lived here promoting things here in Malacca to make it a better life for everyone.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pete. We'll move into our fourth and final question. As I stated earlier, we had twenty questions submitted. This was pulled directly from one of those twenty. The order of the questions will be one, two and three. So Buzz, Greg and Pete. The question is as follows. With the closing of three businesses, movie theater, clinic, pharmacy, along with others struggling, DAC, Nortech and restaurants, as city leaders, what would you propose to retain existing businesses in Malacca and bring in new ones? I believe the community as a whole needs to come together to support all local businesses.
Yes, that's a great question and I appreciate that question. And moving previous to what Mayor Pete had said, I want to, I know that he's worked hard as mayor the last seven terms and he's going on the eighth term here and I appreciate his efforts. And I know he's, he's got a, his place, his heart in the right place. You know, the bottom line is that we need to have someone that has business experience and understands the challenges of owning, creating, starting businesses. And I'm the only candidate that has that experience. That's why I decided to run for mayor. How, you know, when it comes to these businesses that you listed, I'm, I've already had conversations and working on plans to repurpose Fairview. As far as, I've been doing some research and having some conversations. I've spoken to the, I don't want to get into too many specifics, but I'm already working on these things and trying to gather information and look at possible ideas to repurpose them and how the city or the county might be able to work with the city to, you know, to support some of this, these things. One of the big issues that we have is, is revenue. I mean, we did get a donation of a million and a half dollars last, over the last couple of years. And out of that donation, only twenty-five thousand dollars, according to the city manager, was put towards economic development. Twenty-five thousand dollars towards fire and twenty-five thousand dollars towards police and approximately eight hundred thousand towards public works. We would have invested or allocated more of the money towards economic development. I don't think we would be dealing with this, but I also think the parks are a great thing. So I'm not trying to bad, bad mouth anybody. I just think that we could have spent some of this money in a, in a better way to create revenues. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Same question to Greg.
Okay, um, I guess I'm not the only one that has trouble with technology. I think what needs to be done by the city administrator, the mayor, the city council, you need to get out of the office. You need to go and talk to these businesses to see what it would take to help them. The theater, I know they had a lot of issues with the COVID, the, the movie industry. I, I don't think Pete could put on a movie. But what can we do as a city to help the bookstore? I went down there to try and have stuff printed for this campaign and found the doors closed. The pharmacy, I don't know how we would begin to deal with Fairview Northland. They're, they're a big corporation. They're, they know where they're losing money, how they have to save money. My daughter and two daughter-in-laws work for Fairview Northland. They're scared. But I think one thing we really need to do is also focus on what we have. Go talk to them. See where they're hurting. See what, if anything, the city could do. Like Buzz says, you know, we had all these donations. Maybe that would have helped them keep afloat. But we also have to remember that we have a lot of people that live in this town. So we have to be careful about, you know, showing preferential treatment to certain businesses versus the residents of this town. You know, everybody pays taxes and everybody wants their services.
Thank you Greg. Same question to Mayor Pete.
I'm going to kind of respond to both other candidates on this. First of all Buzz, you are not the only person that has a business background. I developed the Central Minnesota Anesthesia Providers PA twenty years ago, which was a business of anesthesia providers that served the Malacca and Princeton Hospital. And as far as the donations, any donations that is given to the city cannot be spent according to how the city wants to spend it. It has to be spent by, and that's a state statute. It has to be spent by the wishes of the person. And as far as Fairview and the movie theater, the movie theater, I just read a the movie theater, I just read an article the other day, and I've been in contact with the previous owners on more than once. And I had a group of four people that were in contact with them and seeing what we could do as far as the city. The other thing that is coming out as far as helping out businesses, you can presently apply for a COVID care grant through the city of up to $20,000 for individual, for businesses, and up to $1,000 for individuals. And those are online. So I'd like to say that, but the movie theater, like I said, 59% of movie theaters are closed. And then the main reason they're closing is they couldn't get the movies now. And Paramount is going to one movie from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. That wraps up our questions. We will proceed to the closing statement. Everyone will have one minute for their closing statement. The order of the statements are three, two, and one. That's three, Mayor Pete, two, Greg, and one, Calvin. Your closing statements.
My closing statement is that, remember, you are, well, your faith, family, friend, and community profession and acquaintance have made you, and you must give back to them. It's been a pleasure serving Malacca for me and my family to be part of Malacca and continue to be part. For 45 years, I've been very involved in everything. And I'd like to thank the chamber for putting this on. And I will appreciate your vote. And vote, remember, repeat.
Thank you, Mayor Pete.
Thank you.
Now to Greg Weller, your closing statement.
I hope the constituents out there like my ideas. And with your support, we can make these ideas and more become action. I have two questions I want to leave with you. Do you think the city has stopped doing business? And do we want a repeat of what's been going on all these years? If you want to contact me, I can be reached on Facebook. My cell phone number is 320-291-4156. My email is PapaGreg, ends with two G's, 2012@gmail.com. Or feel free to stop by my home and talk with me at 850 Third Avenue Northwest. I'd like to thank everybody involved in this and especially the constituents for your valuable time and consideration.
Thank you, Greg. And Buzz, your closing statement.
Hello?
There we go, yep.
Okay, yeah. My closing statement, I just want to say thanks again for the chamber to put this on. And, you know, I believe I can really help this city. I love the city. It's a great, it's a great city, and it's a small town. And we need to have people that have some business background. I understand that Pete has some business background, but he's been in the public sector for a long time. And the health industry, it's a kind of a proxy, private industry. And Greg, I don't know what your business background is, but I do like your ideas. But it takes more than ideas. And going back to the last question, I wasn't talking about using the donations to pay, to help Fairview or the movie theater. I was saying that if we would have worked on some more economic development activities prior to this in the last several years and growing some industry, we may not be in this situation. We need to increase our industry, lower our tax base, and let's get back to business.
All right. Thank you for your closing statement. And once again, thank you for joining us tonight and to helping us reach your constituents and making Malacca great. Thank you again, and thanks to our council members that joined us earlier. We will be posting this recording as well as for other people to listen. Feel free to share it with everyone. Once again, thank you for joining us and have a good night.